I'm sure at nine o'clock, if you're able to stand, let's stand for the invocation. And if you would, remain standing for the pledge of the United States. Let us pray. We meet to serve our community. We pray to use our resources widely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberation and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. In his name we pray, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order a regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM, Tuesday, May the 7th, 2013. I hear a motion that we accept the agenda as published. We have a motion from District 5.
Second.
We have a second from District 3. Any further discussion? Hold in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. The chair shows it's unanimous. At this time, we'd like to have three proclamations. And I don't know exactly which order, but our communication director will read them. But I'm thinking the first one would be Old American Month.
This morning, we have a proclamation in honor of Older Americans Month. The month of May has traditionally been designated as Older Americans Month, a month to appreciate and celebrate the vitality and aspirations of our older adults and their contributions to our communities and their influence in our lives. And whereas this year's theme is "Older Americans Unleash the Power of Age," which highlights how older Americans are productive, active, and influential members of society, sharing essential talents, wisdom, and life experience with their families, friends, and neighbors; and whereas giving our elders opportunities to volunteer their time to support those who are less fortunate, to teach others the skills that they've honed over the years, or to become involved in civic matters are just a few ways citizens can unleash the power of age; and whereas helping our older Americans stay positive, active, and looking forward enriches the lives of everyone involved. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of May be known as Older Americans Month in Henry County, during which time we recognize the important contributions of our seniors and urge every citizen to give our seniors an opportunity to unleash their power through work and volunteer opportunities, this 7th day of May, 2013, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much. What I'd like to do is everybody remain seated, and we're going to read the other two. And when we get ready for a photo, we'll call up every group, if that's acceptable. That way, we don't have to get up and sit down and move around. Okay? Thank you.
The next one is a proclamation designating the week of May 19th through 25th, 2013, as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are vital to public health and access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury; and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others; and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of 19th through the 25th, 2013, be known as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme "One Mission, One Team," and we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies, programs, and activities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation for the vital contributions that EMS professionals have made in our community, this 7th day of May, 2013, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. We also have one more related to that, a proclamation designating May 22nd as National Emergency Medical Services for Children Day. Whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children supports EMS, the community-based public service whose presence is vital to children in need; and whereas the needs of children are different than the needs of adults in medical emergencies; and whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children promotes the high-level emergency care given by EMS providers with pediatric emergency skills; and whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children assists in the implementation of training on the use of advanced technical equipment and services in preparation to save the life of a child; and whereas EMS providers are always prepared to respond to the medical needs of children and return them to an optimum level of health; and whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children works with physicians, nurses, social workers, psychologists, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others to identify and address the issues surrounding the provision of optimal pediatric care; and whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children assists in the development of training programs and guidelines for emergency care providers so that children with special healthcare needs receive timely, appropriate care; and whereas it is proper and timely to bring recognition to the value and accomplishments of such dedicated men and women by designating an Emergency Medical Services for Children Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that May 22nd be known as Emergency Medical Services for Children Day and encourage the community to observe and recognize this important day. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation for the vital contributions that EMS professionals make every day in the care of Henry County's children, this 7th day of May, 2013, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much. I would like to invite the people involved surrounding the Old American Month. Please come forward for a picture, please. Just information, the photo op for the next proclamation would be the exactly verbatim same people, so we're just going to use the same picture, if that's okay. We didn't think of that, but the chief did. Next, we'd like to take time to honor our employees for the years of service. We're going to recognize several for 20 years, several for 25 years, and we're going to recognize one for 30 years of the service. So what I'd like to do, if your name, when your name is called, we're going to set up over here, and we're going to let the commissioners rotate, getting the presentation, and give it to you. If you would, just come over here. We'll make a picture individually with the group, the board of commissioners, and then we'll make a group photo, if that meets y'all's satisfaction. Thank you. Next, we'll have Michael Murphy. Is that better? Next, we'd like to recognize for 30 years' service, David Foster with the Sheriff's Department. Next, I'd like to recognize the county manager. He's going to give a summary of the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. After that, we'll participate in a public hearing.
Your Honors. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to have Angie start off here with a worksheet she's got, in summary of not only the general fund, but also the other funds that will be eventually voted on at the next meeting. So I'll let her start, and I'll just have one injection, and that's, we'll let it open for public hearing, as you had said.
Good morning. I laid on your desk a revenue and an expenditure report, also the two changes that were made from our previous meeting, the Fire Department's budget and the stormwater budget. The total revenues are going to be $122,096,942. And the legislative and executive budgets will be $179,658,335. Judiciary system would be $141,777,000. Public safety total will be $61,968,279. Public works, $10,182,108. Health and welfare will be $4,972,62. Recreation will be $5,041,872. That does include the library. Housing and development will be $2,958,54. Total uses of other funds will be $4,840,006, which brings the expenditures to $122,996,942, with using fund balance of $3,035,357.
What I'll just do here is summarize real quickly what we reviewed last time, and the revenues from last year's budget to this year's budget. Hey Julie? There it is. Okay. As I noted in the last meeting, the total budgeted revenues last year were $116,993. This was in your package last time. We had fund balance usage that was budgeted at $831, leaving the actual revenue collections at $116,1. If I carry that over as a starting point for this year, we had an additional revenue budgeted at $921,000, giving us budgeted revenues of $117,083. The reason the budget has gone up this year is that we do have revenue grants, and at the same time, there are also expenditures in the numbers that Angie had read within the departments to utilize these grants of $1,004 for El-Mig, CTP grant of five and a quarter, and the GIS reimbursement from cities to do that. That would have brought the budget up to $119,061. And then the fund balances, Angie said, is going to be $3,035, which was the 19 we added at the last meeting. And that brings the budget to the $122,077, plus the 19, or $122,096. And as Angie mentioned, of the fund balance, of the fund balance is mentioned here, within the expenditures this year that, and the departments that Angie has gone over, two numbers, significant numbers, that really make that up is the $1,251,000 that was put in the budget for the employee bonuses with the benefits, as well as the $1,889,000 for the increase this year in the group insurance that was put in there. So those two numbers in themselves are $3,140,000. And with that, that is about equal, a little bit greater than what was put in the budget for fund balance. I'll let Angie take it from here on the other funds that you have, fund balance.
We have several other funds that we also have to adopt and discuss at this public meeting. On the fourth page of your expenditure report, we have the La Library Fund of $141,320. The NSP, which is the NSP Grant Fund, for $6,609,511. The CDBG Grant, $850,267. 911 Fund is $3,802,999,000. Victim Witness DA is $928,325. And the Solicitor Victim Witness is $134,430. Technology Service is $106,700. Juvenile Assistance Fund is $28,445. Economic Development, $499,203. Hotel Motel is $443,968. Capital Asset is $588,576. Impact Fee is $2,021,162. Debt Service is $25,928,510. Stormwater is $3,260,072. And Airport Fund is $2,336,715. Total Other Funds is $47,680,203, giving a total of all funds, general funds and other This is a public hearing, so if you have any questions.
Are y'all completed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right now, I would like to announce, we in a public hearing session have taken comments from citizens that would like to approach the bench. If you would, state your name and address, and make any comments that you so desire about the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Seeing none, I would indicate this concludes the public hearing for the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Okay? Thank you so much. Next, we'd like to recognize public safety. You have a resolution request approval of reallocation of funds. Angie Sorrow.
Good morning again. You have before you a budget amendment transferring funds from salaries to various items and the various line items in the Police Department. As you are aware, that the Police Department has been, had several vacancies throughout the year. Right now, they have a total of about 11 positions within all their four divisions. What they are wanting to do is move $234,355, $110,000 of that to overtime, to cover costs of the vacancies for those officers that are having to work overtime. Also move $25,000 to repairs and maintenance, and that is to repair the video systems that are in the cars, Alco sensors and toximeter repair. $30,000 to move to general supplies, to purchase batteries for their in-car video systems, the Alco sensors and toximeters, flashlights, so forth. They want to move $38,000 to small equipment, to purchase protective vests, approximately about 56 vests needed to be purchased. And $31,140 to other supplies, to purchase uniforms.
Thank you. We have a resolution that minimizes to writing in the form of a resolution as to which was just stated. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? If not, will somebody move that we adopt, the resolution is published. If not, will somebody move that we adopt? The resolution is published. A motion to adopt resolution is published from District Five, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor with the uplift of your right hand. Am I correct showing six and zero? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item B, resolution request authorization to use funds from the federal and state narcotic four for two account for replacement of fluent in the CID division.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We're ready for you, Mark.
All right, the CID, their offices, the carpet is old, it is falling apart, it's rolling. It's really... Let's see if I can show you a picture. Some examples. It's been in there since the building's been there. We did put out an RFP. We had three vendors come out. Of course, our first option was try to see if they get it stretched. Every carpet company that came out or floor company said, "There's no way you can get this stretched. It's too far gone." We researched, we want to use a vinyl composite tile, like throughout many of the buildings in Henry County. I think that would work best for the high-traffic area. Purchase Department did put out the RFP, came back with the lowest bid for Cadence Carpet One Company of nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. That's the company we would suggest to use. They were the lowest bids and it would be a good authorization for seized funds under federal statute.
Anybody have any questions?
Mark, is this a commercial-grade tile?
Yes, with special glue for humidity. We looked at all that. It'll work out very well for the high-traffic areas. Obviously, the carpet's not working for us in all those high-traffic areas, but yes.
Thank you. The only question I have, does this project meet requirements for the use of federal and state narcotic funds?
If you're asking me, yes, it does.
I'm asking somebody that can tell me. You said yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we meet. This right here falls under the rules and regulations that we can use this money for this project.
Yes, sir.
Having said that, does somebody move, we approve, the resolution is published?
May I ask a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Since I'm in the flooring business and I do know these people that have bid this job, would it be, could I vote without it being a conflict in any way?
You're not, you're not on this particular project, correct, sir?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
But you know real well, I would suggest for all practical purposes, if in doubt, just recuse yourself.
There's no legal conflict under our ordinances. You're gonna, during the time of your office, you're going to have people who you know that come before you on things. So if you're not currently in a business relationship with them, and you're not invested in any way with the company or involved in this particular project, then under our ethics ordinance, there would not be a conflict.
I think I just recused myself.
Okay. Let the record show that Commissioner from District One, since he's in that business to protect his integrity and the system, he's recusing himself for this. Any further questions, comments from the board? If not, does somebody move, we adopt, the resolution is published? We have a motion from District Five, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift of your right hand. Let the record show with five and zero. Your Honor from District One can return to the room. Next, resolution request authorization to purchase tornado early warning system. In this case here, the presenter is going to be Rod Gray, the Person Director.
Good morning. I have, as discussed with the chairman, the resolution executive summary has been amended and I have made copies for everyone's review, if you please. Thank you, Shay. This is a request for a resolution to reject all bids and close out the bid for storm warning sirens and related equipment, which is bid number thirteen dash twenty-seven. Sealed bids were solicited for the purchase of the stated equipment. Four responsive bids were received for this solicitation and represented a wide range of products with distinctly different technical specifications. Due to the broad range of technical specifications submitted, difficulty arose in being able to conduct a true product comparison and render a recommendation for the lowest responsive bid. Therefore, the request is to reject all sealed bids and to close the open solicitation. Upon closeout, the specifications will be reviewed and amended to more clearly reflect the county's product needs and a new sealed bid will be developed and published for the storm warning sirens.
Anybody have any questions? The only comment, I'm sorry. I yield the floor to the distinguished gentleman from District.
Just, we didn't go to contract on this, did we?
No, sir. This has never come before the board.
I'd gotten a certified letter and it kind of led, it led us to believe that we'd went to contract.
No, sir. But it's related, in general, related to that letter. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just to make comment, going through the system and being scrutinized within staff and some elected officials, it was determined yesterday that we do have some questions lingering about how we bid this out. So the most logical thing to do would be, which since we reserve the right to reject all bids, we rejecting this bid. And we're going to turn around and we're going to rebid it in a little different manner. And that should satisfy the people making the tentative contests, and that's what the letter insinuated. So what this does, it cleans it up and we're going to start over. We definitely going to add all these sirens to the system. And once we get this, I think we'll have a pretty well coverage of if we had bad weather. Having said that, I would recommend that we seriously consider adopting this resolution is published. So moved. We have a motion from District Three to approve the resolution is published. Go ahead, second. Have a second from District Two, further discussion? All in favor, uplift of your right hand. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, senior services, resolution request approval of the preparation, submission, and execution of the Charlie Shear Bravo-Golf application for fiscal year 2014. Ms. Reed, thank you.
Again. I just want to get authorization and answer any questions you might have regarding the CSBG funding. We have received this funding for the previous seven to eight years and we'd like to submit an application to receive the funding again for 2014.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Community Service Block Grant Program fiscal year 2014. If somebody would move, we adopt the resolution. We have a motion from District One to approve. Have a second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift your right hand. Six and zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down to the SPOLOSH Resolution Request and Approval of a Budget Amendment for the Kellytown Road Park. Yes, sir.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. The Kellytown Park property was purchased with SPOLOSH III land acquisition for public use funds. Funding is needed to begin park improvements to make the Kellytown Park ready for public use. These improvements include parking, fencing, pavilions, and walking trails. Excess funds of one hundred six thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-two cents is available in the Fire Station Number Nine account. And one hundred thousand, forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents is available in the Mosley Park account to be transferred to the Kellytown Park. This resolution is to authorize the chairman to sign the budget transfer agreement. Any questions?
Anyone have, we have a question from District Four.
I got a comment, Mr. Chair, and the comment is that we had completed all the work that we had intended to do at Mosley Park, which had approximately a little over a hundred thousand dollars. And also the fire station at Rock Quarry Road was a replacement station. It was part of capital funding and that station's been open now for six or eight months. We're, and that's why I've asked that that money be moved to the Kellytown Park so that we can make some improvements there.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book. If somebody would move to accept, the resolution is published. We have a motion from District Four, Commissioner. Do we have a second? Have a second from, I saw the distinguished gentleman at the end, District Five for second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, uplift your right hand. I'm showing six and zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, on the person, we have a resolution award a bid for the rental of portable toiletry. Rod Gray.
Good morning again. The portable toilets are required for various county events and locations. Prices were solicited for the various products in order to lock the prices in for the contract period. The basis for award was determined by the lowest overall cost of the rental of the regular toilet and the unisex handicap accessible toilet. Based on an analysis of the previous three years of the portable toilet rental contract, it was determined that the handwashing station was never rented and the prices submitted for this product did not factor in the determination for award. The recommendation is to award this contract to Mass Services Inc., DBA Comfort Zone Portables for the rental of portable toilets on a renewable contract basis. This will be a unit price contract with no fixed quantities for one year with two mutually agreed upon annual extensions.
Is this money, money, funds allocated?
This would be, the departments that use it would typically have a line item for rental services and if pending fund availability, they would rent them as needed.
Okay. Anybody, any Commissioner have a question, comment? We have a resolution in the book. If somebody would move in that direction, it's published. Move to approve from District Two. Second by District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Resolution Request Award of a Bid for Full Depth Reclamation Work on various county roads. Public Works Division Director, Terry McMichael.
Good morning Chairman, Board Members. We are requesting award of a bid for full depth reclamation on some county roads. I think y'all are very familiar with our full depth reclamation project where we go out and prepare our roads for resurfacing. If we've had what I would call base failures, we go in and do the full depth reclamation on these roads and then resurface them. So the bids were sent out and we had four responses and we're asking to award to Blunt Construction, who is the low bidder, in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents. And Blunt has done, matter of fact, I believe Blunt did the first road we did in the county as full depth reclamation. So we have had experience with this contractor and we do recommend award to him.
Anybody have any questions, Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
You know, there was some comments in the sign-off section that just making sure it was an apples-to-apples with sand and other, you know, parts of it. Is everything an apples-to-apples analysis on the low bid process?
Yes, sir. We did call about that because that was a little bit unusual. Most of the time, we see them bid a penny or something like that. But they said that they are aware that whatever we require them to do, they will put that down at zero cents for that unit price. Matter of fact, we did get an email that confirmed that because we were a little uneasy about that ourselves. So we did get an email to confirm that.
Any other Commissioner have a question or comment?
Well, I'd just like to say that I've experienced looking at this process and down in Locust Grove and it's a very interesting process and I think it's really worthwhile for Henry County.
If no further questions or comments, we have a resolution.
How many roads we bet, too?
There's a list in your book. I believe we're doing about four or five. Let's see. Yes, sir, five roads.
I think showing four.
Oh, that's right. Let's see, we're doing Fox Run Lane, Fox Run Court, Up Church, and Eastlake. You're correct. There is four.
Right.
Four roads.
Did you find that in your handout? Okay.
How many miles would that be, too?
He has it, it has it listed here.
Okay, I remember that.
Yes. The link, the first one is, Fox Run Lane is one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven lineal feet. The Fox Run Court is one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six. You don't have to width, too, adjusting length.
No, I'm just trying to determine how much.
Okay, the Up Church, Up Church Road is going to be eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three.
Probably close to four and a half miles, just.
You talking about total?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's real rough. I did that in my head without my calculator, so that could be wrong.
Okay. Any other further questions, comment? If not, we have a resolution for somebody's consideration. So moved. We have a motion from District Three. Do we have a second? From District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing six and zero. Thank you so much. Now, Terry will present the bid for improvements at the intersection of SR twenty and eighty-one and Phillips Drive.
This project is an improvement for safety and performance at Phillips Drive and eighty-one. It's a project where we have partnered with the City of McDonough. An intergovernmental agreement that outlines the responsibility of each party has been approved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners and approved by the Mayor and Council of McDonough. The county has allocated four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars from capital funds and has already expended a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars toward the project. The City of McDonough is contributing six hundred thousand from Elmeg's funds that they'll be receiving. And I believe that they have already sent the contract up and waiting G-dot signature on that. So that has been sent down to the city. The city has signed it, sent it back to Georgia DOT. In addition, the city is putting in three hundred thousand in SPOLOSH funds. We have requested those funds last week and talking to McDonough, those, that check will be on the way very shortly. So we probably need to talk about that. Once this bid is awarded, a notice to proceed will be given to the contractor. Then after he has submitted his bond and insurance requirements. And we have received a copy of the signed Elmeg agreement back from Georgia DOT from the city. Then we'll issue a notice to proceed as well as having our three hundred thousand deposited in the county's designated fund. And that's important. We cannot start any of the construction work until that signed copy is back from Georgia DOT because they won't reimburse until we get that back. So the city has hand-delivered that and probably anticipated, I would say probably this week. They usually hold those things about a week to get signatures and it was delivered the first of last week. So we should be getting that, or they should be getting that pretty quick. We recommend award of this contract to Southeastern Site Development. They were the overall lowest bid and that bid amount was a million, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-four cent. Total project cost, this is information, was a million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and forty-one cent. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this one.
Any Board Member have any questions? If not, we have a resolution that covers the item just presented. If somebody would move for consideration. We have a motion from District One, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift your... All in favor, uplift your right hand. I'm showing, uh, six and zero. Thank you so much. Next, we have the Resolution Improvement Development Agreement with, uh, Prologics for the Intersection Improvement Along SR one fifty-five. Terry.
Um, through the efforts of Henry County Development Authority, Prologis and Henry County, the county was able to attract the Home Depot Distribution Center from one fifty-five to locate their facility in Henry County. Prologis is subleasing or will sublease the property to the company for operation here in Henry County. Part of this joint effort in attracting this company involved coordinating with Georgia DOT for road improvements along State Route one fifty-five at the access point to the property. It is estimated that the cost of the road improvement project will be in excess of three hundred thousand dollars and I think we're in the neighborhood of around four hundred thousand is our estimate. Georgia DOT has allocated three hundred thousand dollars in funding toward that road improvement project through the economic development portion of its local maintenance and improvement grant funding. You will hear us use that word quite often, that is LMIG. So when we say LMIG, that does stand for local maintenance improvement grant. These funds were administered to the county because the state cannot designate them to a private entity, so the county will be the recipient of those funds and will be responsible for, um, doing that project and administering those funds. The funds do require that a thirty percent match. If you remember when the TIA failed, one of the things that was a result of that, the county went from a ten percent match for all their grant funding to a thirty percent match. So, a thirty percent match on three hundred thousand, the way they do it, they figure thirty percent on the amount of the grant, so that would be ninety thousand dollars. That has to be above and beyond. That cost has been associated or designated to Prologis. The county will not be putting that money in there. They are requiring the developer to make that match, so there will be no funds expended. In addition to that, the county staff anticipates project administration cost not to exceed about twenty-five thousand. So as, as part of this development agreement, we had in there that Prologis has agreed to enter into this development agreement with the county whereby it will advance the four hundred and fifteen thousand to a restricted project account to be used to fully fund the road improvement project. Prologis has further agreed to be responsible for the payment of any and all overages that may occur. So this development agreement really memorializes the rights and obligations of the county and Prologis with respect to this road improvement project. Basically, LMIG will be funding three hundred thousand. Anything over that, Prologis will be paying. The county will be administering, um, will be administering that project. The, the project, uh, way, the way it will happen from here, once the project is out for bid right now, I think the bid's open on the sixteenth. Once those bids are received, we will go to Georgia DOT, carry them a copy and a recommendation of the low bidder. Once they see that the project does indeed cost at least three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, they will write that, they will start the process of, uh, of, uh, sending us a check for the, for the funds. And we do have, uh, one of the follow, following resolution is approval for y'all to sign for that LMIG. So we'll get to that one in a minute, but that'll cover that. But that, uh, that's kind of the process of what'll happen. Right now, we want, uh, the board, we're asking the board to sign this agreement between us and Prologis that kind of memorializes that agreement. Project's out for bid, um, and also we'll, the board will sign this LMIG, uh, application, if you will. It'll be submitted to GDOT. Once the bids are open, we'll carry a copy of that bid and a low bid recommendation to them. They'll submit a one-time check. They've changed how they're doing the LMIG, so we'll get a check for three hundred thousand dollars. And once we get that check, then we'll issue a notice to proceed. Again, uh, and award of the contract. Those will probably be coming to you, probably, will probably come at the same time because we won't, of course, recommend award of the contract till we get, um...
Anybody have any questions?
The, uh...
I have not heard of, um, Prologis. Have, have they worked with Henry County in the past?
Yes, so Prologis has got several developments in the county, um, so they've been around for, I guess, I mean, I've, I've known they've been around for four or five years. Bob White could probably give you a whole lot more information about them than I could, but, um...
I can, I can add a little, shed a little light. Over in the Greenwood District and a lot of the distribution areas, they're one of the primary landowners and set up a lot of these deals bringing in the, the companies that do this. So they're, they're very financially solid company from my understanding.
Bob, do you mind giving us, um, a review?
Could you identify yourself, Bob, for the audience, please?
I'm Mr. Chairman, I'm Bob White, Executive Director of the Henry County Development Authority and Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, yes, Prologis, uh, as Commissioner indicated, is a substantial investor in Henry County and has been for more than a dozen years. Uh, they own collectively with A and B Properties. There was a merger a couple of years ago and Prologis, they emerged from the merger as Prologis being the named entity, but, uh, they own over four hundred acres of industrial land, uh, in Henry County and have developed, uh, several million square feet of industrial development already in Henry County. This would be, uh, a one point one million square foot facility, but they're, uh, they're one of the major industrial development companies in the world, so they're very, uh, very capable and longstanding company.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Thank you, Bob. We have, uh, in our book, uh, two things. One is a resolution that approves all this and the second attached to it is the development agreement, uh, it's about eight pages long that covers everything that Terry just presented to that. If somebody would move, uh, to consider resolution in the book. We, we have a motion by District Two to approve the resolution as published. We have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift your right hand. I'm showing six and zero. Thank you so much. Next, we have planning zoning discussion of a potential agreement to the ULDC regarding the method of calculating building fee permit valuation for new construction.
Give that word to the board.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I scratched, I'm sorry about that, I scratched the wrong one out. I have, I have a second opinion, I scratched this one, but anyway, um, resolution request approval of the LMIG grant, application fiscal year 2013 for the construction of turn lanes SR one fifty-five Home Depot which you just alluded to earlier.
This is the LMIG agreement that I was just referring to and, uh, for it to be processed, uh, the board does have to sign, uh, this right-of-way agreement, uh, for own system as Georgia DOT calls it for SR one fifty-five and Home Depot, uh, center. This is the first step necessary in getting that, uh, LMIG application to the state and I have talked to the state and kind of brought them up on the timetable of what's going on on this and, um, made them aware of projects out for bid and so we're, we're in communication with them and we're on schedule, if you will, in trying to deliver this as, as quick as we can. There is a pretty, pretty interesting time element with this one, so they're trying to open that center, I believe in June, I think. Um, and so we need to get this project moving. I would like to say I certainly appreciate, appreciate the county attorney's help on these agreements and making sure, because this was kind of a rough situation and, and she's been a big help in that and making sure we got all that done.
Anybody have any questions? If not, somebody move, we approve the resolution as published.
Move with approval.
Have a, uh, motion by District Two, second by District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, uplift your right hand. I'm showing six and zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
I have rechecked this sequence and now we are ready for discussion of potential amendment to the ULDC.
Good morning.
Attorney Latonya Wiley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board Members. Um, my office was tasked to look into making a potential change to our ordinance as it relates to the valuation of building permits and I have, um, Bert Foster here who's going to assist in the presentation and give, um, the board any specific answers to questions concerning how they usually calculate these fees. But in a nutshell, and for these purposes, um, the, the Building Department currently uses an international code council book. It's a nationally recognized publication and they use the values established in that book to determine permit fees, uh, for new buildings, constructions. And in past years, there have been complaints by some that this utilizing this book yields an unreasonably high figure for permit fees and what the board has asked me to do, what I've heard also from, um, Development Authority and Secretary Directors that, listen, why don't we come up with an alternative method for valuing these permit fees that might bring some equity to a situation and allow, um, the developers or builders of these properties to, um, to have a, a chance of showing that the fees were too high? And so what we did, we undertook the process of looking at other jurisdictions to see what they provided and that memo is attached as prepared by the Building Department, um, Director. But one of the counties where, um, such an alternative fee valuation process was utilized that sounded close to what I was hearing here internally, uh, was Coween County. Coween County a couple of years ago, um, came up with the alternative fee valuation process and in reviewing Coween County's policy, it seemed to ring familiar with things I was hearing here internally. So we have set aside, set apart the, um, a section in the code to allow new developers for new construction to have an opportunity to contest the permit fee valuation initially determined by the Building Department. What that says is that if an applicant contests the valuation data as determined and utilized by the ICC, then the applicant can submit alternative documentation to the Building That alternative documentation will require the submission of at least two of the three items that are enumerated in paragraph three. A copy of the turnkey contract supported by an affidavit by the contractor and or the owner, um, to state that the value of the project is that particular amount. A bank-approved appraisal, that's within one year of the date that the building permit application is filed, or if there is no bank-approved, um, appraisal, then the owner or contractor can go out and obtain an appraiser. Or three, um, if the owner or developer can show to the Building Department another nationally recognized valuation data code that has been used in other jurisdictions that may yield a different result than the ICC that we currently use, then the Building Department can take two of the three items and review it to make a determination to determine whether or not the building permit fee should be reduced. If that's the case, if a reduction is warranted, then with the county manager's, um, approval, the fee reduction will be, um, implemented. If the Building Department official determines that the information provided does not support a fee reduction, then the request will be denied and the applicant will have the opportunity to appeal to this body for consideration. Under number six, paragraph six, um, Mr. Harris asked me to put this in, I, I agree with him. He didn't want to have an applicant or a developer, um, taking multiple bites at the apple if they didn't like the results through this process and then go over to the Development Authority and attempt to get a, a reduction through the economic incentives resolution. So what this says is to the developer or the owner, you make an election as to which process you would like to follow and, um, you will be bound by that process. Number seven is very important because this will not apply to development impact fees. Those are non-wavable and those will not be subject to reduction and we want to make that perfectly clear. What I've done is just put this, um, together for your discussion only. It has not been properly advertised for a formal amendment. I wanted to have a public discussion with you as a body, um, get your thoughts and input, hear the thoughts and comments of the Building Department officials as to how this change might affect its operations. And then if you all want to tweak or change any of the items that we have proposed, then you certainly can do that.
Yes, sir.
I have several things to say on this and I think, Latonya, if you'll go to page five of nine, and I think this will really explain it an awful lot better, put that in front. It basically, it, and this refers to the Home Depot. I'll just go ahead and talk about it while you're trying to find it.
Okay, I'll scan.
Uh, building cost, the contractor's estimate was thirty million dollars. International Code stated it would be ninety-one million dollars. That's a long ways off of thirty million, what it actually costs to do it. Different sixty-one million dollars, permit fees on thirty million, a hundred and ten thousand on ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That's act, I mean, really, that's ridiculous and we need to, we need to take a hard look at what the actual contract dollars are because that's what it costs to build it, not some form that we get from the International Code of whatever. You know, I mean, I, in other jurisdictions, well, in the City of Atlanta was based on, uh, the actual contract cost in years past when I used to go get permits at the City of Atlanta. It was based on that. I just, uh, we've had several meetings, we've talked with Bob and others about it. That method, it, it should be based on the contract amount. If it's a permit to build, it should be based on the contract amount to build it, plus or minus the, uh, whatever the land cost and the other things are, I think we could work out to make sure that that's involved in it. But, uh, ninety-one million dollars, we never would get another project in Henry County if we kept going in that direction. And you couldn't blame anybody for not wanting to do it. So, and in my opinion, this is, we need to make, make this move and we may, need to make it reasonably quickly so that we can try and bring some more business to Henry County. And that was the perfect example, and I'm glad you put it in there, that's a perfect example of why, you know, we need to move away from that. And I'm not faulting anybody in our system for doing it, that's because that's the way we've been doing it, but we need to make this change and we need to make it quickly, I would say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have any comment? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to get some input from, um, the Development Authority and Mr. Bob White, just to make sure that this adds the flexibility to tie into what Commissioner Bowman was saying, just so we can encourage economic development here in Henry County.
Thank you and, uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak again, uh, and thank you to the county attorney and to, uh, Bert Foster and the Building Department for really working with us on this. This has been a concern for us, uh, competition for economic development projects because it's very, very stiff. One of the best incentives that we've historically had in Henry County is it's been a good place to do business and we really tout the fact that the county is run like a business as best we can. We recognize as a government, we do a very good job, you do a very good job of, uh, monitoring costs and really providing good services, but the actual cost, uh, the county has used different valuations, methodologies through the years. When it changed to the International Code Council methodology, it really didn't pop up on our radar until a project in two thousand and eleven, which was the George Pacific, uh, project. And I appreciate, Latonya, including the, the Home Depot project, as you alluded to, based on the ICC code valuation table, it was a ninety-one million dollar construction cost when the actual cost is thirty million dollars on that. The project that raised this to our... The project that raised this to our attention was the George Pacific Project. It's a 900,600 square foot building. Based on the valuation of the International Code Council, that building would have cost over $69 million to build. That building was completed, for less, actually sold at the end of the construction period for $27 and change, $27 million, and it's valued at slightly above that now by the Henry County Board of Assessors in that, so rather than $69 million, we're really looking at about a $28 million investment. Those are just two illustrations of it, but it's definitely way out of line. I recognize, a lot of people use ICC and that is a national standard, they look at national cost across the board, but we just think that's unrealistic. And we appreciate this flexibility and these efforts to give us a tool, expand to be able to remain competitive in these projects.
So, but does this ultimately look like it fills the hole on that problem that we are having? Is this accurate?
I think it's, no one contests paying the fair share, the actual cost of the permits. And I think this would definitely be well-received by the development community and others working with that. And this does give us that methodology to be able to adopt it. And we would certainly encourage you to move positively toward that amendment to the ULDC at the appropriate time.
Chair, also, I think, Bob, the marketplace, the free market sets the value of the construction by bid purposes. So when you're, you know, to use a valuation table, it's, it just doesn't seem to work out, it never has. And, you know, when you get competitive bids in a free market, that sets the value at that particular time of what it's worth. I would certainly like to see us move to use contract pricing information as opposed to a square footage amount, because a square footage amount for a distribution center would be totally different from a square footage amount from a Class A office building.
That's correct.
And the contract amount will set the value. That's what it costs to build it. So that's what the permit should be based on. It's just my opinion. Yes, sir.
Chairman, if I could add, you know, this is something, and Bob's right, we've looked at it for a number of years. Part of the challenge we had with-
Excuse me, would you identify yourself with an audience, please?
I'm sorry, Michael Harris, Division Director for the Planning and Zoning Services Division. Part of the challenge has been certainly wanting to allow for some type of tool that Bob could use to create an incentive and allow an incentive on these bigger projects, but at the same time, not wanting to run the risk of having a substantial loss in our current revenue structure, revenue stream within the Building Department. So we wanted to make sure we found a balance. What we were proposing with this was to offer this as an option. So we would continue to, for regular products that come through, you know, the vast majority of the products that come through with the Building Department, they would still go through the typical ICC, we'd use ICC valuation charts to determine those building fees. However, we would have the option for some of these bigger projects to be able to utilize this alternative method to come up with the permitting price.
So we're going to take advantage of the smaller properties that come in by using the ICC, and then we're going to take care of the bigger projects? That don't make any sense to me.
Well, and again, if they feel as though that their, the costs are exorbitant, you know, out of line, then they certainly would also have that option to defer back to the building official and say, I'd like to, you know, go back and reexamine my, you know, how they were calculated.
Okay, I just don't, I just feel like the contract amount sets the value. I mean, that's, for the permit purposes, the contract amount is the contract amount. And, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if it's that far off on the larger ones, it's going to be off on some of the smaller ones, too. I understand, but I don't think we should be trying to raise revenue based on a valuation that is not, that is not concise of what we're trying to do.
And over the years, we had not heard any other complaints or any other concerns about our permitting fees for those projects. It's come to light, you know, principally on the larger, the larger massive scale projects. But on a day-to-day basis, it's not been an issue, principally because I think so many jurisdictions currently also use the ICC valuation tables, and it's consistent with what's going on throughout the industry. You know, I'll even say, you know, in speaking with the officials from Coweta County, we asked them, how often do you utilize this alternative method? And they said it's been very infrequent, because it's not often that anyone, typically no one asks for alternative methods or has a concern about the permit fees, but, you know, their economic development staff, they have, they know they have that tool in their, within their resources to be able to offer that incentive to make sure that they can remain competitive with other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Sir?
What I would like to do at this moment here is to exercise the virtue of my office. I would like for the board to consider allowing the chair to appoint a committee, which, if these two people are amenable, the chair being the Honorable Distinguished Guy from District Four, and also the Commissioner from District Two, and research this and meet with the appropriate staff members and others, and review it, and make their findings and recommendations back to the board. Because obviously, Mr. Bowman is up to speed on building, and Mr. Preston is, obviously understands the financial impact. And it wouldn't take a motion, but if everybody would accept this in consensus, I would, by virtue of my office, unless you two wouldn't want to do that, and I would acquiesce to somebody else.
Is that my problem, given my quote-unquote expertise in building business?
Okay. So you're agreeable? So I'm appointing a committee of chairman, the committee, Mr. Bowman, co-chair, Mr. Preston, and the committee, I would like for them to review and make recommendation to this board of a potential amendment to the ULDC regarding a method of calculating building fee permits, evaluation for new construction. So, thank you. Unless y'all have any additional questions, we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources, resolution question adoption of employee health and dental insurance plans, the presenter is Fred Alata.
You're receiving a couple of replacement pages. There was a couple of minor changes to what I put together and wanted to give you the official change on it, and I'll explain where they are when we get to it. The budget we've been talking about has talked about putting $1,889 into the budget for group insurance, which was the increased cost from last year to this year with the plan changes and everything. Blue Cross is the current healthcare provider for the employees of Henry County Board of Commissioners. They have offered, and we've had, three plans, an 80/20 HMO, an 85/15 HMO, and an 85/15 POS. Broker went ahead and received six insurance companies providing us rates under either the same benefits or reduced benefits, when the initial percentages of increase over last year were received. It then came back with opportunities to reduce those percentages by changing the benefits. The final and best percentage increase was 16% from Blue Cross Blue Shield with certain changes to the benefits. Coventry was with the same at 18.5% with the same reduced benefits. The proposed plan to get to a 16% increase will do the following. It will raise the employee copay, emergency room copay, all three plans from $150 to $200. It will raise the out-of-pocket maximum on only the HMO 80/20 from $1,000 to $2,000 individually, and family from three to six. It will raise the hospital and outpatient copay from the 80/20 plan from $300 to $500. This is making it the same as last year, present year, rather, 85/15, which is at $500. And it implements, for the first time, a $200 deductible for Tier Two and Three drugs. Currently, there's no deductible on drugs. Tier Ones, which are your generics, will not have a deductible. We also received from Kaiser Permanente, an 80/20 plan. I will go through a bunch of schedules here in just a second and show you their medical facilities and service areas and centers of excellence that the employees would have available to them if they were to, if you are to pick Kaiser and they were to use select Kaiser themselves. The difference, though, is that, as noted previously, the Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and other six, five that bid the Blue Cross, the group insurance, to get to a 16% for Blue Cross or 18.5% for Coventry, the above items I mentioned of reduced benefits, Kaiser with a cheaper rate than all of them, and a retention of this year's benefits, which I'll show you in just a second as well what they are. The other item that's to be reviewed is the Delta, is the dental program. Currently, Delta Dental is the dental insurance provider. They have a proposed rate increase of 2%. The employees, for the past numerous years, the county has absorbed the individual cost, I'll show you in a second, and the family coverage has been shared between the county and the employee. If I can, I'll just review a schedule that we went through a couple of meetings ago. Under our current plan, Blue Cross started the bid with the, actually, they started the bid around 30-some percent increase and got it negotiated down to 22 on an apples-to-apples basis. Aetna would not bid a policy under our existing plan, neither would United Healthcare. Coventry started at 22.9%, and Cigna and Humana were at 35% over. Part of the issue, as I raised in a previous meeting, is our loss ratio at the time was 98.8%. Since then, our loss ratio in the next month, I understand, is 109, which will take that up slightly. Yes, sir?
You mentioned that Aetna and United would not bid under the current plan? You're speaking of last year's plan, correct?
The one we're presently in, yes, sir. With the present benefits as they are, yes. By taking and raising on the 80/20, the out-of-pocket to 2,000, it brought Blue Crosses down to 19. Aetna jumped into the running at a 22.6. United still didn't enter. And then Coventry came from 22.9 to 21. Cigna with their 35% were not in the running there. And the last one brought Blue Cross to 16, Aetna to 21.4, 25 for United, and 18.5% for Coventry.
Your question, 16%, my notice in the spreadsheet that you put together last year, I mean, last week, that the percent increase for family coverage would be around 376% and 327% for individual employees?
Each of the increases are 16, taking the existing rate that we were paying individually for whatever it is, single, so on and so forth. Each one of them increased by 16%. Depending upon what you do with the increase, in either absorbing it as a county, which the $1,889 did, or if you were to say whatever that increase is, we'll give it to the employee. And doing that, if you were to give the 100% of the increase that the county was absorbing or receiving, and give it to the employee and add it to the existing charges they were being charged, it would come to over 300%, as I think that schedule showed, yes.
So basically, what you're saying is for a family that's making about $38,000, which is the average payment or average salary for our employees, would jump from $42 a month to $200 a month?
If the board were to reverse what's presently in the budget, which is going from absorbing it, but instead saying 100% of it was going to be charged to the employee on top of the 42 presently there, that figure that you're reading off the schedule I had before, which I could pull up and validate, but I'm just expecting that the one you have is the one I gave two meetings ago. Yes, sir?
I know you're about to go into Kaiser, and you're going to go into a comparison in terms of cost, but on page nine of a spreadsheet you put together, you also mentioned that, or you also added that if we converted 100% to Kaiser, the county would save about $2.1 million.
I think it's one, well, it depends, the tricky part is, would the 85/15 people, which is over 400 of them, would they convert the 85/15 to an 80/20 Kaiser? That's questionable, I don't know, nor do I know how many of the present 80/20 Blue Cross would switch as well. That's a big question mark.
Just my opinion, I mean, Kaiser presented a program where the premiums would be cheaper than the premiums of Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and there would be no out-of-pocket cost for the employees. That would pretty much be a pay increase for our employees, correct?
The issue that has, that came up after Kaiser presented, as you know, had to go back to Blue Cross, because their contract states that to the extent you're offering what they, what the industry refers to as a slice, meaning by allowing another carrier to participate instead of they having exclusive or 100% of the plan. If you were to allow both plans to be, to coexist, to be available, Blue Cross's contract states that they have the right to, they have to waive that first, and in waiving it, Blue Cross has said, will waive it but under conditions. And they gave four scenarios. The best scenario, I believe, was, and it's not best, but it is of the four they offered, was that if you offer this program, another program, Kaiser, whatever you charge for Blue Cross for the employees must be equally charged, not less, and therefore, as far as offering the insurance, the Kaiser insurance at a zero or other, less than the $42, for example, for family, it would not be waived by Blue Cross. And there's a Blue Cross representative here today that questions can be asked of them as well.
You're speaking about the Blue Cross contract that is currently in play?
Yes, sir.
And when does that contract expire?
End of this month.
Okay.
And again, it is at this point that that same contract, is my understanding, is the one that would be attached to the proposed rates, and the waiver, again, being requested, would follow the letter we received for the waiver of whatever it is to allow a slice.
So if we allow Kaiser as an option, Blue Cross's contract expires at the end of the month, do you believe that the other companies that gave bids to the broker, do you believe there's a possibility that they could, that would put pressure on their rates and those pressures, those rates would come in a lot lower?
I spoke with a broker last week, and he was speaking with each of those companies, and he can come up here if you would like, and he spoke with them or actually wrote them to get their responses as to what they would do, and he can give you the specifics of the other carriers and what their responses are to each of those. My understanding is, they would follow similar requests, if you would, of charging the same. And the other, I said there were two conditions in that waiver that Blue Cross gave to allow Kaiser. The second one was, to the extent that in excess of 7% or more of the enrollees went to Kaiser, they would have the right to come back and take their proposal and adjust those rates. An adjustment, in my mind, is not going to be less, it'll be more, but they won't tell us what that percentage would be until they see the senses of the people that would leave the program and go to Kaiser.
So where were the RFPs submitted? Were they submitted to the broker who's receiving the commission, or were they submitted to our purchasing department?
The broker traditionally goes out and is the one that's basically requesting the proposals and reviewing those proposals from the various insurance companies, puts together the summation, if you would, of what those proposals are.
All right. So the, oh, I got one more question. So the $1.9 million that were taken out of our rainy day fund, where does that come from? Because when you add up the number of employees, 1,377, and you add up the Blue Cross premium, it comes to about 1.5. So there's about 321,000 left over. Where is- Where, where is the remaining dollars, where are the remaining dollars going?
I'll go back to one of my original, when I first presented this.
This is the premium, about sixteen percent?
You could, but again, and that is, that is the eleven million eight, that was the total spend, by, and it goes to thirteen-seven with the sixteen percent, and that was the million eight, eighty-nine. Figure that's been put into the budget and been out there for this discussion.
I just think that, I mean, I'm not saying that we go a hundred percent to Kaiser. There are some people that don't mind paying, paying the, the higher rates, but I'm sure there's a number of employees who would mind paying reduced fees to get great healthcare from a company like Kaiser.
And, and to that extent, Your Honor, I'm presenting both of them here for you and the other commissioners to consider that within your decision of how you want to proceed with accepting one or all of them. Thank you. I got that, but I'm looking for the million eight, eighty-nine. Here, excuse me. To your question, this is bigger than the view, but over here, the premiums today, based on the type of coverage, eighty-twenty, eighty-five, fifteen, eighty-five, fifteen POS, these are the present number of participants here. This is your two thousand extension of that by an annual basis totaling eleven-eight. And the premiums as extended, based on the increase of the sixteen percent, as you can see here, comes up to thirteen-seven, and that's the million eight, eighty-nine.
We have a question from District Two.
First of all, Commissioner Holmes, for trying to be creative with this, but I think we need to kind of back up and, and look at, because you mentioned something, we went over it very quick. You said the loss ratio was ninety-eight percent for the whole year of last, you know, the past twelve months, but we're actually running at a hundred and nine, a hundred and nine percent, meaning that Blue Cross is taking a loss on us, you know, in the, how does that work?
In the most current, the month that followed after the last twelve-month loss ratio percentage was put together.
But, but I think just for the public, as well as everybody here, what does the loss ratio mean? What it, what is, what is, what is that ratio comprised of?
I apologize. Okay, I understand.
From, from an employee and patient perspective, not from the insurance company perspective.
Yeah. What it means is, is for every dollar, it's just like your own budget, if you made a hundred dollars in your budget to buy groceries, pay your bills, and whatever, basically, the ninety-eight point eight that it was meant that for every dollar you made or paid, if you would, in this case, to Blue Cross, they were writing a check for ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents of that hundred dollars that they were receiving in premiums.
So basically, basically, you're saying that ninety-eight percent of the, of the, I mean, ninety, ninety-eight dollars of that one hundred is going towards patient care, and only two dollars is going towards bonuses and, and bonuses and?
Administration, administration, yes.
One, one point two percent is going to Blue Cross, essentially, that's the spread.
Right. And when you mentioned the next month, in other words, when we did the loss ratio, the loss ratio was done, it was with most current information, which was from March one of last year to February twenty-eighth, I believe that's the period, twelve-month period, and during that time, they took all the premiums we paid and all the losses they paid out, and divided the two and came up with ninety-eight point eight, as I said. And then the month of March, the month that followed it, in that month, I'm told that the loss ratio of the single month was a hundred and nine, meaning for every dollar they took in in March, they paid out a dollar nine.
And it doesn't take, I mean, you have one person, additional person come up with cancer or getting a horrible accident or something to that degree, all that directly impacts, and the insurance companies absorb the risk, essentially. By us doing it the way we do versus self-insure, they're basically underwriting through their actuaries to, to absorb the risk. Is that correct?
Yes. No different if you wanted to be self-funded and say you were going to, you know, go ahead and charge premiums and do whatever, it all comes up.
What does the insurance company's risk have to do with the county?
Well, what my point is, is that we saw the, we went out, to do an apples-to-apples comparison, we went to all the other major carriers that gave you choice, because Kaiser, very good platform, but it's a different delivery method. We did some informal polling with everybody who came and sat in for the, the informal meetings to kind of understand what this would be, and Kaiser has a great product, but the thing is, is if you have a specialist, if you have a primary care doctor, or you're currently being treated for some type of service, there's a good chance you might, you're probably not going to be able to keep your current service provider, your, your primary care doctor. You're going to have to break that relationship and go somewhere else. And most people who have gynecologists or pediatricians, that, or, you know, you're struggling with something that you have a specialist for, that, that gives a great deal of concern. So I, I don't want to give, I don't want to give-
Both Pima and Henry are in Kaiser, in the Kaiser network.
Commissioner Holmes, I'll give you a chance in a second. The, the thing I don't, I don't want to, the public to misunderstand that we're comparing apples to apples. We're kind of comparing apples to oranges, because if you want to keep your service providers, the first analysis that Fred went over kind of explained that. That's where we put it out for open bid with all the other carriers, and you can see they all pushed up the rates significantly, materially. The only reason I can think that Blue Cross did not push up their rates significantly and were the low bidder is because they've had a relationship with us for many years, and they understand the population probably better than the other carriers, and they were willing to, to essentially take that risk because they were controlling the population. And I think Commissioner Holmes is right on by putting choice, but I'm worried that we negotiated this with Blue Cross under one set of variables, and now we're trying to change the rules on them, and we're mad that they cut this thing so lean that they can't give it to us.
I would like to make a, a comment at this time. Blue Cross Blue Shield was an issue for several months. It didn't come to light until recently. Now, in the last several weeks, Kaiser was introduced as an, an option. Now, I'm going to read to you, and this is my recommendation, I stand by it. May the third, I sent this to all the honorable people here, and trust me, I, I've, I've done my homework on this, for me. It said, "Over the past several days, I have read and studied all of the emails surrounding Henry County's health insurance bid for fiscal year 2013, 2014. The most recent is found below from Fred. I have also been very mindful of the limited time in which we have to put this thirteen million dollar package together, based on facts which change with a new email. Every time I got a new, every time I got an email, everything changed. It went from this to that, Kaiser compared. And, and with all due respect for the distinguished gentleman from District Five, I was on board with several options at several times." Now, it says, "Please accept the following from my recommendation. Approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield bid, which reflects approximately a sixteen percent increase from last year's premium. Pay the one point eight, it's one point eight-nine, but anyway, pay the one point eight million increase from the fund balance in the 2013, 2014 budget. Do not approve Kaiser to be part of the health program. Begin after July the first of this year. Study and consider a health wellness program, and I understand this program can be started anytime." Thank you, Tony Smith. So that's the only comment I like to make, and I like to open the floor.
So, so, so we're going to go up on families, three hundred and twenty-seven percent, and with the wellness program, add eighty more dollars onto that, take that out of our employees' paycheck? Is that what you're proposing?
Oh, I, I stand by what I just said.
The rates are the rates. So all we have to do is say, yes, Kaiser comes in and people sign, and people can choose Blue Cross or Kaiser. And I'd like to have to put a program together, it's already together.
Fred, did you want to?
We talk, we talk, we talk, we talk about, or Commissioner Preston talks about outsourcing employees, cutting costs. We have an opportunity to cut two million dollars and give our employees a break, and we're going, and we're not going to do that? I don't understand that.
When I get to the next schedule, your honor, Commissioner Holmes?
I feel like you're using-
Okay, let's do this. The distinguished gentleman from District Five had a question addressed to the speaker at the podium. After you address that question, I will yield the floor and recognize District Two.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, the, you used a two million figure, and I, I may have that in some of our meetings when we discussed this, but if we were to convert one hundred percent, and I have another schedule that's part of the package that I gave you today that I was going to present and go over, and I will if you, when I get to it, that is that if the nine hundred and forty-one present enrollees in the Blue Cross, Blue Cross Blue Shield program were to go one hundred percent to Kaiser, the savings would be one million twenty-seven, still substantial, but I just want to put that number, and that's the calculations I have here.
I'll take that.
I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure that schedule on the show will be that number.
May I recognize the gentleman from District Two?
I just want to make sure, because by no means am I the person, I mean, I was the person last year that talked about how I believe our benefits don't really tie to where the market is currently. I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we're open and transparent as to what's going on with the health, health insurance negotiations, because we had some, some informal meetings on this, and I was actually trying to build a coalition, because this is the problem we have with healthcare. And the ticking time bomb, and you can hear the ticks going on as we speak, is we had the governor of Georgia, Governor Nathan Deal, who's been doing national interviews, where he's talking about in the coming year, health insurance premiums will go up by twenty-six percent. If you look at what the, the Society of Actuaries, a nonpartisan group, has published based upon new healthcare changes, it's going to be twenty-six point seven percent in the state of Georgia. So we've got a tremendous, tremendous issue going on. And I had, in this informal meeting, I tried to extend a bridge where I said, "Let's do the wellness plan, because we got to change the behavior. If you have a loss ratio of over ninety-eight percent, and then in a current month, or over a hundred and nine percent, meaning the company has a loss, with, not even taking into account the changes in healthcare, we're done. I mean, we can't sustain the rate that we're going." So I tried to build a coalition with other commissioners where I said, "Let's do a wellness plan, let's bring in Kaiser to offer our employees more choice." The variables changed after that meeting. Blue Cross sent a letter out saying, "Look, we have to control the population because we've cut this thing so lean, that we're not going to give you the ability to have one is free and then us be more expensive." And since that letter has been put out there now, the variables have changed. I would love to have more choice. I would love for us to look at health savings accounts, look at the wellness plan, look at us putting spousal surcharges. If you have a spouse that has insurance somewhere else and they're taking ours because of the cost, a tobacco surcharge. I've talked about every one of these things, and we all know they're very unpopular with a lot of the people up here on the board, and they have zero chance of passing. But this is the way I personally feel, if we're going to be more marketable, get, you know, to, to get the, the expenses for the county at a level place. So I don't appreciate Commissioner Holmes, I think, to score political points when he doesn't want a wellness plan. Because how are you going to change the behavior? How are you going to change the behavior?
Both Kaiser and-
Now, Commissioner Holmes, I've been respectful every time you've talked, but you, you continue to not recognize the floor.
Both, both, both of them have wellness plans.
You don't have a wellness plan.
Kaiser, if you want, you can come up here and talk about your wellness plan. Blue Cross, if you want, you can come and talk about your in-house wellness plan.
The chair recognizes District Two.
Why are we trying to out, why, why are we trying to provide outside wellness?
District Five is out of order. The chair, floor, recognize District Two.
I, I still don't understand, we're on the same page. I want to add more choice, it's just the variables have changed. To say that you want to add something when we've been told by Blue Cross, Blue Shield, who negotiated under certain terms, to, that says, "Look, we can't provide you with that option unless you're willing to absorb the risk," meaning Henry County will absorb the risk, meaning that if we have more than seven percent, this cost could go up even more. Now Kaiser, I give them full credit. They offered to kind of work with us if we could get the rates now, but that's, that's not happened. So we're kind of at a position, and I just, I want to make sure the public is aware, this is, this is not a great situation, and I still stand by the fact, we've got to change the behavior in the coming year, because that twenty-six percent, we're given, we're talking about pay raises and bonuses for the employees, and yet, it's not fair for us to do that and not work on the behavior in the long term, because we're just going to take it away from them by raising the premiums next year. That's what my concern is.
Okay.
Have you finished?
Yes, sir.
The chair recognizes District Five. The chair recognizes District Four.
Very interesting conversation that we've had this morning already. The issue, one of the issues here is that we were working with one, well, a group of insurance companies, and we settled in on one, and then with three weeks to go, we get, Kaiser comes into play. It's not apples-to-apples. I've, I've read the information, I've made a few phone calls. I mean, with, yeah, I, I look at Kaiser's fine, I don't have an issue with Kaiser, I don't have an issue with talking to them next year. But Blue Cross and Blue Shield bid on this project with thirteen hundred and forty-seven or seventy-seven employees, whatever that number is, and then, we're going to change the game on them and not expect them to go up? Absolutely not. The other thing is, I, I asked several questions, and I've been in several meetings with several people with Kaiser, and asked a situation about Emory, for instance, and I was told Emory is on your quote-unquote professional, whatever the terminology is. However, it's on a case-by-case basis. The next thing with, with Kaiser that I think our employees would be interested in, if you've got any type of specialist, you're going to go tomorrow and see theirs, Tomorrow, Georgia, and see there. If you've got other situations going, what if you want a second opinion? You're going to get that second opinion from the same Kaiser doctor that gave you the first opinion? I don't think so. If you've, I've had a doctor for twenty-five years. I mean, do I want to change doctors now and go through all that, all over again, and drive over tomorrow when, when, I'm not going to mention their name, but they're probably within about two minutes of my house that I can go to? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. And I don't, I don't think at this point in time, I think choice is good, but I think we need to have more time than three weeks and be put under the hammer to make a decision. We've done that too many times in the last six or seven years that I've been on this board, and I don't think we should do it this time. And to have that come up and to be pushed into a corner, and to push the others into a corner, I don't think that's fair and reasonable, and I don't think it's equitable. I think that we should move forward, move on with, with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and make that move, and have time. We can start the day after we sign the agreement. We can start negotiating and looking at, not negotiating, but looking at other plans and try to come up with something that works better. But a lot of the employees that I've talked to had problems in the past with Kaiser, when Kaiser was allowing you to use your own doctor. And here we are at the last minute, we're trying to calculate in who we're going to use and who we're not going to use. And at the end of the day, I, I totally agree with Commissioner Preston, it's apples and oranges, it is not apples-to-apples. That's my opinion, I was trying to be quiet on it, but I felt like, well, I need to go ahead and chime in too, so.
We have a, I'd release, we'll thank you so forward to the distinguished gentleman for Area Three.
Well, I'm all about choices, and I sit in the meeting with Kaiser, and I was real impressed with the choices they had to offer. And I think we should offer our employees a choice, but the timing's just not right. We have failed as commissioners, I think, because we should have been looking at this six months ago, and we didn't, and here we are, two or three weeks out, trying to make a big change, and I just don't think the timing's right. I think it's, it's more beneficial to stay with what we got this time, and, and everything needs to be on the table next year. I support a wellness program, I think that'll help our claims come down, and I think that's what we got to work toward, and we got to have the employees help to help us with this. You know, I, I hear we got one employee that I had been told, we went to the merch room twenty-something times, "Well, when you do that, it costs us money." And so we got to get these employees on board with this. Now, we doing this increase this year, we not going to be able to eat it all next year, there's no way. So we going to need everybody working together to try to make this all work next year. I appreciate Kaiser coming down, they had a good offer, and, well, the comment that I wanted to make is the meeting that I sat in on, and I don't think the other meetings went as far, but the HR director that we had didn't even have an opportunity to sit in on these meetings. I think she needs to be on these meetings, wait. So I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other comment?
When I met with the Kaiser people, they had a good program, and I, I'm all for, offering people a second opinion or a choice, but I'm not on board with penalizing the people that want to stay with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, to continue to go their doctors and their health providers, so that's my comment.
Any other comment?
I think, I'm, I'm just talking off the cuff, we do not have a resolution prepared.
I made two.
That's published to us.
I, I carried two with me, because I didn't obviously know what the commissioners want to do. It may not even be close to what you would want to do.
Well, let's, let's get the feelings as to-
I'm, I'm just going to make a plea to the employees who want to, who want to reduce premium. I'm just going to make a plea to the employees who want to, who want to reduce premium, reduce cash out of their pocket, out of their net income. If you want that choice, email the commissioners. That's all I'm going to say. Email the commissioners and demand the choice if that's what you want.
Anyone else have any comments before we move in a direction? If we have a draft, would you present the two because I have none?
No, I didn't present any because the discussion I knew was going to be.
There's too many variables.
Too many variables and the best I could do is come up to, I could come, I figure this could be changed and adopted or whatever you'd like. What I did is I had one that was done is if you were going to do this, Blue Cross, and the other was to do both, Blue Cross and Kaiser. And the other one, of course, is Delta Dental, so.
Does somebody entertain a motion of either one of these?
I'm not afraid to make a motion. I'll make the motion if everybody else is going to be a bunch of crickets up here. I'll make a motion that we stay with Blue Cross this year and we entertain, next year we take a look at having options. I don't know why you guys are afraid to speak up. I mean, my God, why don't you speak up? I make a motion that we stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Well, I'll second that.
We have a motion from District Four, second from District Three, to stay status quo with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
There's.
With the county taking 1.89 out of fund balance for this year to pay the 16%. Have a motion, second. Any further discussion or comment?
Wellness is not coming in on this year.
I understand that wellness, we can implement that at most any time and that's why, in my recommendation to the Board last Saturday, I think we need to stay status quo now, the, we take the 1.89 out of fund balance and then once we sign it, is try to get a wellness program intact. You have, Blue Cross Blue Shield has one, you can hire one, you can, you have all kinds of latitudes to do that, but that would be my recommendation. Any other further discussion?
Your Honor, the one that I have drafted and it can be lined out and changed and do another separate one, was the discussion and the acceptance of Delta Dental for the dental program. So I have that in here, so it could be a separate resolution, I don't have one, but the discussion was regarding the healthcare and the Delta program, Delta, the dental program, excuse me, so I can scratch it out, I have to make another one or put one in place, change this accordingly.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion that we take the dental out and we visit that at a later time.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion. Do you amend your motion, take your dental out? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, raise your right hand. Okay, we now taking the dental out, so the motion has been amended and is still on the floor to accept Blue Cross Blue Shield. No further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I'm showing five, all opposed, no. I'm showing one, no vote. Now, since the, I think the dental expires on the same Ju-, June the first, would that be a correct statement?
That is correct.
Okay, I think it would be appropriate since we've taken it off and it's still consistent with this, that we now discuss the separate part of this item without having to amend the agenda. Since it's a part of the original, we amended it, so now, if someone would like to discuss, bring up the dental portion.
What is, could I ask the question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What is the cost to the employee for the dental portion?
Okay. I put up here, and it's in your folder, is one of the schedules that was provided you this morning, modified, is that the current rate for an employee only is $28.14. The current rate that we're paying is 77.42 with the split being $36.30 and $41 for the employee. The proposed 2% increase is $28.70, which is roughly a 56 cent increase for that. And the employee again pays none of that as it did last year, as I'm proposing, to continue to keep the policy in place for many years. And the county portion will remain as it was last year, 36.30 and the dollar, excuse me, the $1.55 increase that the 2% represents takes the overall from 77.42 to 78.97, the $1.55 added to the 41.12 would make it 42.67. Or any combination thereof that you would like.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I move that we accept the proposed 2% and go with Delta Dental Insurance for the fiscal year 2013, 2014. Have a motion, that was my motion.
Is this being appropriate, Your Honor, to, I mean, sooner or later, I know we're, and I know that the word bonuses was brought up earlier and I'm, I've already, everybody knows my stand on the 2% increase, but the employee's going to have to start paying a little bit more and I'm not sure that on this dental plan, that that might be a good place to start some of that. Now, I know that's going to be unpopular, but.
That would be a whole lot less for the discussion debate, be a whole lot less grief as it would passing on a significant portion. The county employee, it'll only be, employee only is just nickel and dime stuff, okay? Even with the bonus that we're talking about, or a 2% we're talking about, which is money is going to be the same, they would yield much more to cover the costs on this. So this, in my mind, this right here would not, this is nickel and dime stuff and I know nickel and dime add up to big money, but if you're going to start, I would, I'm going to suggest that my motion died for lack of second and I would entertain a motion that would pass this cost on to the employees.
I would like to yield a floor to, it's Preston, Commissioner Preston, to. I'm asking you for a comment, I'm not asking you to do anything that's going to hurt your feelings.
No, no, no. I think it's, I mean, when we were over at the school system, this was a hard decision too because the school system had covered Delta, I mean, covered dental for many, many years for the employees, very similar situation and then the family was on the employee to cover. And this probably, this would, if we did this, it would save, what, a million dollars? Is that the, is that the cost that this would save if we pushed, made?
On this program?
On dental, if we made the employees pay.
Oh, if they paid all of it, 100% of it? I didn't calculate. I know that our present cost for the employee only, if I take as what you see up there, this year's increased cost for the 56 cents on the 542 people, 542 people, we're picking up the 56 cent increase, that this year's going to cost the county $3,600. The total spend is 186.64. The county is paying roughly $15,500 per month, employee only cost, and that times 12 is $186,000 per year.
Okay, so that's the total expense. Now, family portion, because it still looks like we're picking up a portion of that too.
And I apologize, it's going to definitely be more than 186,000, I didn't divide the two and I don't have a calculator, but the 36.30 that we were paying and would continue to pay is up there times the 829 and I can tell you the total spend, 785,000 for family, I've got that calculated. And looking at the 36 versus 42, you're probably looking at guessing 375, $370,000 of that roughly, I'm guessing, is going to be county portion. And that's rough, rough in my, just trying to do prorata, if you would, of the 785.
It's $5,280.73.
Sorry, my thoughts were we continued with the employee and we have the family, if you want your family plan on it, then you'd have to do it. Now, all that's based on that 2% increase and 2% salary increase also because it's going to, it's going to wipe out a portion of that, obviously, but it comes, I don't know if this comes out before the taxes or not, so if it does, it won't wipe out quite as much, but on the dental portion of it.
So you're just talking about absorbing the increase, not taking out the family or?
No, I was actually talking about having them pay a little bit more for the family.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at, that's where I'm going. I'm not saying, and I don't say 100%.
Right.
Maybe 50%, but you know, that's why, that's why I went to you for some number.
Sure, sure, and I think, I'd be amenable to us, because I think this would be a way without, healthcare is such an important concept, whereas dental is important too, but it's not as expensive, you know, and catastrophic if you don't have dental and coverage, so I'd be willing to consider that too.
What would that be, Mr. County Manager, if the employee paid 50% of the family portion and we picked up the employee?
I apologize, I was trying to calculate, I told you the number would be about 375,000 that the county's absorbing for the 36.30 and I calced it's 361, so I wasn't too far off on the 375. Apologizing, your question, sir?
My question was if the employee paid 50% of the family portion, the actual cost of the family portion.
Right now, they're paying greater than 50% by paying $42.67.
That's greater than the 50%, I can't see everything.
The total is 78.97.
Yeah.
The present county is 30, the proposed county is 36.30 and the employee is 42.67.
Okay, I got you, I got you. So based.
You're kind of, are you considering that 30, because it looks like we're paying 36.30, were you thinking about maybe dropping that down to 18? Is that what you were meaning by 50%? So that would mean we'd pay 75, I mean, the employee would pay 75% of the family and we'd pay 25%?
What I was looking at is just trying to, trying to pick up something in this particular area, that's why I wanted to pull it out.
Right.
Because it's 829 families on it and 542 that are not on it. Now, everything I'm saying there, again, it will be perfectly clear, is based on the employees getting the 2% increase in their salary. Without that, I would not support it at all, so.
I wasn't here, but I did ask the HR on this and found that they believe for at least the past 14 years, the employee portion, and not to say that's to stay that way, but just to give history, has been always that the employee portion, as indicated, has been for free. That doesn't mean you have to keep it that way as you're indicating. The only thing I can reference is that since the employee is paying nothing, but the county's absorbing 28.70, the employee, or the county's absorbing about $8 more for the employee, for the family. So from a, however you want to treat fairness or whatever you want to call it, equitably or so on and so forth, the premium for the employee only that the county is absorbing of 28.70 is less than what it's absorbing on the family. But the, again, the employee under the family coverage does pay something versus the employee not, but again, you look at the total figure, you can see where the county is still absorbing more money under the total package. And the percentage is 54%, the 42.67 is 54% and the 36.30 that the county is absorbing is obviously the reciprocal 46% as it is shown here.
Let me ask you another question. The dental insurance agreement is up July the first of this year, was it, did I get affirmative on that a while ago when I asked that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've either got to do one or two things. We can either table this and get bids and bring it up at, at the next meeting we'd have, would be the third Tuesday on the evening shift, and do that, and I don't know, if I could ask the Distinguished Human Resources Director to approach the bench. In the event, we table this and we resolve this issue at the third Tuesday and we go with someone other than Delta Dental. How much time, what effect would that have on your department to make this transition?
Well, I think I need to make a correction and I guess I'm supposed to state my name for the record. I'm Tara Everhart, the Human Resources Director. The renewal for the dental.
So there is an opportunity for us to go to another dental provider at the last second, but there's an opportunity to go to another healthcare provider.
The dental plan is up May 31st, the same as in.
When?
May.
May 31st.
So June 1st, we have to have the new plan in place.
But Chair, I don't think the question, I don't think was the provider, we were just trying to figure out the split between employee, because I mean, the bid, I don't think that, is that what anybody was perceiving as, was the issue was the bid? I think it was just the, how the payment was going to be spread, so I don't know if we need to go bring in another provider.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one other comment, or.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, I'd like to make one other comment and I'd like to say that I apologize for bringing this, this is another one of the last-minute things and that, seriously, you know, we, because we're down to May 31st, I think probably we should just stay with, this is just an area that we're going to need to really talk with and I, you know, once again, it's a last-minute thing and I've kind of put us under this hammer and I apologize for that.
What comment I'd like to make, we're talking about a total of $8,922.73 for the family and the single coverage. I think we all just absorbed this this year like we do with everything else and let's just look at the whole total package for next year. That's my comment.
Can we do the bid on the medical insurance, do we not bid, look at other plans for dental?
According to the broker, they were, there were bids that were, went and sent out for the dental plan as well, at the time when he sent out the bids for the medical plan.
Thank you, Red.
Anybody else have any comments?
The annual cost on the family at the $1.55 per coverage per month increase is $18.60 per year, per, if you would, enrollee. So whether the county absorbs 18.60 per, or the employee, or some portion thereof. As I indicated earlier, the 42.67 is on here where the employee absorbed 100% of the $1.55, is 54% versus 46 for the county. If you were to change that to 60.40, the employee would absorb $47.38 versus 42.67 and the county instead of 36.30 would absorb 31.59. Just taking a percentage change from 54 to something higher.
On a parliamentary point, I don't think I can resubmit the motion I previously made because it died for lack of second, so I think it would be appropriate for someone else if they wanted to move in that direction, is to move along those lines.
I'll make a motion to go with what Fred just mentioned, which was the employee on the family only, that we still cover the employees completely, but on the family, we do 60%, I mean, the employee pays 60% and we pay 40% of the family. That way it generates a little bit of savings for the county, but still doesn't, is not a dramatic material change to our employees as well.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, have a second District Four. I would like for you to consider adding the appropriate language that would authorize the mayor, I mean, the chairman to execute the new agreement. I think that would be appropriate to do that. Based on past practice, we've done that, so.
I'd be fine with amending my resolution.
We have a motion to amend, we have a second to amend, all in favor of the amendment, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, five and one. Okay, five and one. Any further discussion on the amended motion? If not, all in favor of the amended motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. We're showing five and one. Thank you so much. Next, we have the, uh, Appointments of Board Assessors, Exhibit Twelve. Said members of the Board of Tax Assessors are appointed by the Board of Commissions. These appointments do not have a district-specified residence requirement. Board of Commissions established the term of office for the Board of Tax Assessors' office as a whole. In two-eleven, the Board of Commissions established a three-year term of offices, office for persons appointed to the board. Prior to that resolution, the term of office had been six years. Two members have an expired terms in the near future, and it is necessary for the Board to, Commissions to make an appointment for each in order to allow for a smooth transition. For informational purposes, the county's twenty-thirteen tax debt digest must be approved by August the first with this Department of Revenue. The Board of Tax Assessors has requested the reappointment of Pam Adaway, who currently serves as chair, and Lee Preston-Freaky, who has served on the board since two thousand and four. In, in order to open this up, uh, I think we need to consider these. Do we have any, uh, Commissioner here that would like for the board to consider, uh, If not, we have a resolution in the book, resolution to appoint the said, mentioned two people. If somebody moves, we adopt, the resolution is published.
So moved.
Have a motion from District Three to approve the resolution. Have a second from District-
The resolution doesn't identify any individuals, so you all would need to identify the persons whom you're appointing.
I apologize, because it said, whereas on March twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen, the board received notice from Pam Adaway, I just looked for the name, so.
That's okay, the resolution called, the resolve clause-
Okay, it said a copy of each letter is therefore, uh, so where, where would we fill in the blank, if we're gonna adopt this?
Under the resolve clause, Mr. Chairman.
On the back page, we could, uh, if, if the board approves this resolution, we put Pam Adaway, uh, shall expire July the twentieth, twenty sixteen, and, uh, Lee, uh, Leah on the July the twenty-ninth. Let me see which one expires when.
Actually, Mr. Chairman-
Did I get that correctly?
It's the other way around, Mr. Chairman. Uh, well, Pam Adaway's term will expire July twentieth.
It expires when, July the twentieth?
Yes. And Ms. Freaky's will be the twenty-ninth.
Okay. So now, the, we've filled in the two names of Resolution Number Thirteen, so now, uh, I think it'd be appropriate, parliamentary, to, to have a motion to amend the original, uh, motion, to amend the resolution to add these two names.
So moved.
We have, we have a motion to amend it. Have a, have a second, have a District, uh, District, uh, One. All in favor of the amendment, raise your right hand.
I missed it.
Oh.
We're appointing, um, all right, I'm on board.
Sir?
No, I missed it for a second. I'm on board, oh, yes.
Okay, okay, what we did, we just amended the, we just amended the motion to add the two names. The first motion didn't carry the two names. So now, all in favor of the amended motion, uplift your right hand. Okay, it went six and zero on, on the amendment plus the original. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Exhibit Thirteen. Next, we have a, uh, this is to advise that the term of Robert J. Head, who is a member of the Henry County Board of Family and Children Services, will expire on June the thirtieth, twenty thirteen. The law requires that the County Commissions appoint a successor within ninety days after the vacancy, uh, within ninety days, uh, after the vacancy occurs. I request that you appoint Mr. Head to the Henry County Defax Board. Mr. Head has served on the De, Defax Board since twenty, uh, oh-four. He has proven to be a valuable member, uh, Defax Board, uh, involving family and children issues. As the position will become vacant July the first, twenty thirteen, is hopeful that your appointment will receive. Uh, Ms., uh, Andre Chambers, Defax interim director. Is anybody here to, to represent, uh, Defax? Does anybody, uh, is, is, is Mr. Head here at this meeting? Uh, for all practical purposes, I'm gonna assume that Mr. Head, uh, would accept this appointment. So I would suggest that the board appoint Mr. Robert J. Head as a member of the Henry County Board of Family and Children Services, and his term would expire on June the thirtieth, twenty eighteen, if somebody would move in that direction. Have a motion from District Five. Have a second from District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, uplift your right hand, uh, six and zero. We got a letter here from the Henry County, correction. Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, uh, Per Region Six Planning Board bylaws, I'm obligated to notify the governing authority sixty days prior to the terminating, uh, terming of a board member. Please accept this letter as notification per information provided by the Henry County Board of Commissions to our regional office. Mr. Jim Risher was first appointed to the board February fourteenth, twenty-ten by Elizabeth B. J. Mathis, chairperson, eligible member, may serve two full consecutive, uh, three-year terms. Mr. Risher's attendance, uh, are as follows, September the fourteenth, twenty-twelve, excused November the ninth, uh, excused January the eleventh, present, March fourteenth, twenty-twelve, present, May the ninth, present, June the thirteenth, present, September the twelfth, present, November the fourteenth, unexcused, January the sixteenth, unexcused, March the thirteenth, present. Mr. Risher, uh, to represent Region Six as the Adult Mental Health Representative on the Mental Health Planning Advisory Council. Is Mr. Risher here? Uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna assume that if appointed, he would serve, because no one's told me otherwise. Does any Commissioner have any other appointees they'd like to put in for consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Mr. Risher, and he is in agreement.
He's in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Did somebody move? We have a motion from District, uh, Three to appoint, uh, Mr. Jim Risher back to the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Board.
Second.
We have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Correction, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Somebody move, we approve the minutes of the March fifth, twenty thirteen meeting. Exhibit fifteen is published.
So moved.
Okay, we have, we have a motion from, uh, District Five, uh, second from District Four. Uh, the only reason my right ear is better than my left ear, because y'all said that simultaneous. So any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, six and zero. Do we have anybody to sign up for public comments today? No?
No.
Okay. Uh, Chairman and Commissioners' comments. Do we have any? Well, I, I think we got a conversation going. Okay, let's start, uh, from District One. Do you have any comments? Okay, District Two. District Three.
Well, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Uh, I've got a barn hall meeting tonight at six o'clock, Southern Bell Farm, and, uh, Senator Rick Jeffries will be there participating, and State Representative Dale Rutledge, along with the Board Education, Mike Griffin. And we're gonna have hot dogs and ice creams, so y'all come out, you hear, six o'clock. And the other comment I'd like to make is, is, uh, talking to Ron Burkhalter yesterday, we're about six weeks ahead on schedule for the airport, so we're moving that project forward pretty quickly. They started putting down some asphalt, actually, yesterday, and, uh, so that project will come along pretty, pretty quickly. But one thing I'd like for us to consider in the near future, since we, uh, canceled our agreement for airport, I think we need to look to what we're gonna do with airport. We, uh, need to look at Airport Board or Airport Authority or something, um, or some type of management company. We, uh, we need to move forward at, now, we've got some people out at the airport, Gary Crenshaw, he's a friend of mine, I went to school with him, he's been out there around that airport since nineteen sixty-seven. He actually flew out of the first airport that ever, the first airplane that ever flew out of that airport. And, uh, we got some very knowledgeable people, but us as Commissioners, we don't have the time to go out here and help run the airport. So I just think we need to look at it in the near future, so that's just a comment. Thank you.
District Four, you have any comments?
No, sir.
District Five, you have any comments?
Nothing.
The Chair has no comments. County Manager, do you have any comments?
Sir?
Uh, County Manager, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would ask your indulgence in amending the agenda to consider condemnation acquisitions and an agreement concerning a potential lawsuit that I'd like to discuss, if you're so amenable.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna hear ten condemnation.
Uh, I thought, I have, I believe there are six.
Six, okay, we're gonna hear six. And what was the, um, settlement for litigation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does somebody move, we, uh, amend the agenda to hear six right-of-way acquisitions? And one, uh, settlement agreement with sub, sub digital display.
So moved.
Say again?
So moved.
Got you. We have a motion to amend the agenda from District, uh, Five.
Second.
Have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor of the, uh, motion, raise your right hand, six and zero.
Thank you, thank you. Um, the first item, the first property acquisition, I would like for you all to, uh, consider approving by way of negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to OCGA thirty-two dash three dash four, three thirty-two dash three F nineteen. It's parcel ID zero-two-five-zero-one-zero-two-eight-zero-zero-one, that is property that is located at four fifty-five through five oh five, Santa Fe Trail, Allenwood, Georgia, and this is a part of the Fairview Road Splot Three project list. The amount of property to be acquired will be zero-point-zero-one-one acres of right-of-way, more or less, zero-point-zero-zero-eight acres of temporary easement, more or less, zero-point-zero-one-five acres of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot one ninety-eighth of the twelfth District, Henry County, Georgia.
We have a motion to, uh, approve parcel thirty-four, North Henry Realty. Have a second?
I'll say it.
Have a second from District Two. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
The next parcel, which is also a part of the Fairview Road Splot Three Project, Road Lightning Project, is parcel number sixty, Golden Arch Limited Partnership, I guess you can figure what that, Golden Arch is. Um, the parcel ID number is zero-two-five-dash-zero-four-zero-zero-four-zero-zero-five. The property is located in seventy-one Fairview Road, Allenwood, Georgia. The request is to authorize acquisition of point zero-five-one acres of right-of-way, more or less, point zero-two-nine acres of temporary easement, more or less, point zero-one-seven acres of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot one ninety-seven of the twelfth District by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to OCGA thirty-two dash three F four through thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
You have a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion, District Five?
Second.
Second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
The third parcel, also part of Fairview Road Lightning Project, is property owned by Ingalls Markets, Inc. It is located at one hundred Fairview Road, the parcel ID number is zero-two-five-zero-one-zero-zero-zero. The property to be acquired is zero-point-zero-seventy acres of temporary easements, more or less, point zero-six-nine acres of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lots one ninety-seven of the twelfth District by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the aforementioned code section.
Somebody move? We have a motion from District Five, uh, second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, six and zero.
Okay. The fourth parcel, also part of the Fairview Road Lightning Project, is property owned by Family Dollar Store of Georgia, Inc., is located one-five-zero Fairview Road in Allenwood. Parcel ID number is zero-two-five-zero-one-zero-three-five-zero-zero-one. The property to be acquired is zero-point-zero-four-one acres of right-of-way, more or less, point zero-six acres of permanent easement, more or less, point zero-two-nine acres of temporary easement, more or less, and point zero-one-three acres of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot one ninety-seven of the twelfth District of Henry County, Georgia by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the aforementioned code sections.
We have a motion, we have a motion, motion to approve from District, uh, Five, uh, second from District, uh, Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, six and zero.
The fifth parcel and the Fairview Road Lightning Project is parcel number thirty, is DDR M Shops of Allenwood, LLC. The property is located in twenty-eight hundred through twenty-eight forty-six East Atlanta Road, Allenwood. The parcel ID number is zero-two-five-zero-four-zero-zero-one-three-zero-zero-zero. The property to be acquired is point zero-five acres of right-of-way, more or less, point one-two-eight acres of permanent easement, more or less, point zero-two-zero acres of temporary easement, more or less, point zero-three-nine acres of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot one ninety-eight of the twelfth District, Henry County, Georgia by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the aforementioned code section.
We have a motion from District Five, second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, six and zero.
Um, the part in the next parcel is a part of the Campground Road Extension Project, which is also a Splot Three Project. The property is located on Jodico Row, it does not have a physical street address, it's undeveloped land. The parcel ID number is zero-seven-one-A, it's an apple, zero-one-zero-zero-four-eight-zero-zero-zero. The property to be acquired, point one-five-oh acres of right-of-way, more or less, point one-two-three acres of permanent easements, more or less, in Land Lots fifty, seventy-nine, and eighty of the sixth District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the aforementioned code section.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion from District Four, second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved.
That concludes all of the property acquisition matters, board members. Um, the final item- And the final item for your consideration and approval is an agreement with Southern Digital Display. Last July, Southern Digital applied for two sign permits to allow the erection of digital signs on right-of-way that is owned by Norfolk Railroad Railroad. When the planning and zoning department received the application, they denied it because there was a provision in our ULDC that did not allow signage in the right-of-way, including railroad right-of-way. The company appealed, hired a lawyer, and threatened litigation. And during the course of reviewing that particular claim, it was determined that our zoning ordinance did not assign a zoning classification for railroad right-of-way. And what that meant was that the property could, for all intents purposes, be deemed to be free of any type of governmental use or regulation. And in order to respond to that, this board, per recommendation of staff, imposed a moratorium to address that deficiency in the zoning ordinance. Since Southern Digital had filed its applications prior to the imposition of the moratorium, that company would not be subject to it, and we worked diligently in order to try to come to a resolution with respect to the pending claim. We have an agreement that's before you that contains a number of items that we believe was the fairest way to resolve this. Important to note that as part of the agreement, Southern Digital agreed to withdraw one of its applications altogether, and so we'll only be proceeding with the possible erection of one sign in the railroad right-of-way. And they've also agreed not to come and apply for any other signs for the next five years. That was something they volunteered, and it wasn't something that we imposed or requested. If you look at page two of the agreement that's before you, I had that placed on the bench prior to the meeting. You should have something, you have that?
No, we do not.
I'm putting it on your bench. Take a look, it's on your bench.
I don't have the agreement.
It was separately put up there this morning before y'all took, before we started the meeting. It's on my master papers somewhere.
I got you.
You got it?
We, we have the thirty-page agreement, yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna be real short, because the law requires the essential terms of the agreement we discussed in public session. If you flip over to page two, Commissioners. And working with Michael Harris and Sherry Matthews, we were able to get the best arrangement with the least amount of obtrusiveness on the Eagles Lane and Parkway area, which the sign is to be erected subject to your approval. But it'll be a nine-and-a-half foot by thirty-three foot sign with a maximum height of fifteen feet above road grade. There will be decorative trim across the bottom of the sign. The pole height will be minimized in order to reduce exposure of the pole. The signage shall not have any moving objects or flash in any manner. There shall be LED technology installed on the signage. And there's something called dwell time. The dwell time governs the amount of times the screen flips. So that's, dwell time, at least ten seconds on the sign. If you flip over to page three, this is a very important part of the agreement that we want to ensure was in there. No excessive light intensity or brilliance on any message. And as you can see, there are intensity levels that are required to be adhered to as part of the agreement. The display should have automatic dimming technology such that the sign will automatically sense dusk and darkness and adjust the brightness level accordingly. And prior to the issuance of a sign permit, the applicant has to provide certification that these intensity levels will be automatically installed and not subject to manipulation by any individual. We were also able to negotiate, subject to your approval, some county-related items that you see on the last paragraph of page three. The applicant has agreed to post any type of emergency in our public safety messages such as weather emergency alerts and amber alerts. They've agreed to donate advertising space for county government events, including our hearing TV fourteen, for a minimum of twelve weeks a year, so long as we provide a digital display. And the county could request additional advertisement space subject to their availability at no charge to the county. That sets forth the essential terms of the agreement, and there is no monetary compensation involved, however it does require your approval, board members. And upon passage of this agreement, the claim will be resolved.
We have a question from District Four.
Looking at the photo, first of all, sign's in a, a little bit of an increase in grade, number one. Number two, it's in a pretty steep curve. I, I think you would notice that there's a sign that's almost in the sign, that shows from the Gold's Gym side, a drive that enters into a six-lane parkway, it's six lanes wide, although it's only four lanes. And I'm, I'm concerned about the safety of those traveling this route that would be focusing on a digital sign that's that large, in a steep curve, on a slope, coming into almost a blind drive with a limited sight going back down the hill, and not paying attention to the eighteen-wheelers coming out from the, from the industrial park, either there or Carter's, which is on the opposite side. It just seems like to me that that should be a safety issue that we should have been able to fight on, not so much a, not so much a zoning issue that we didn't have covered, which nobody would have ever thought that the railroad would be leasing out property to put signs on. I just have a problem with it being right there, and I appreciate the fact they're gonna give a lot of time to, donate a lot of time for Henry County to put their signage on, but at the same time, I'm wondering who's gonna be reading that when they'll be paying attention when they're going into that curve? It just appears to me that that's a safety issue, and I would have faulted on the safety issue. I would have said it's, it's not safe, you know? I mean, the, the sign that shows the road coming out, it's, it's, it's almost in the sign. And, and, you know, I know, when I'm going down the road, I read the billboards, I'm, I'm looking at them. I just think there's a safety issue there, and it's hard for me to support that. I know that I will be voting against it, but at the end of the day, it's hard for me to support something that appears to be a safety issue to me.
Two things to address your, your concerns. I, I recall a few months ago when the planning and zoning staff presented a proposed amendment on these digital signs, and that was one of the concerns that was discussed at that time, was how distracting are these digital signs to the motorists? And I think they were proposing not to have them within so many feet of each other, and y'all recall that, because it could be distracting. I think you all then want to have that to move forward and send staff back to come up with another scenario, which I think is going to be coming to you all soon. The only thing I can tell you, Commissioner Bowman, is that the dwell time has been specifically addressed in the agreement, and we got that from working with an outside expert, and, and the restriction on animated and moving objects on those digital signs. I think from industry standards, that, that is, those restrictions are put in place in order to avoid any additional distraction caused by these signs. So there's a dwell time where it has to be up for a certain amount of time signage. You can't have, you know, things moving and flashing and flashing lights such that people are taking their attention away from the roadway. That's about as much as I can speak to on the safety issue. As far as finding in those safety grounds, we certainly examined all of the, what our legal options were in consultation with an outside planning expert as well. Unfortunately, our zoning ordinance did not have a zoning designation, a zoning classification. And the case law says that means it's free of zoning, and such that you can't restrict it to a certain extent. Lastly, I will add that, you know, Southern Digital had the same issue down in Locust Grove, they found that void in City of Locust Grove zoning ordinance, they found those voids in other jurisdictions ordinances where, you know, counties and cities aren't zoning railroad right-of-way. We have since amended that, Sherry came a few months ago, so now we have actually assigned a zoning classification to railroad right-of-way, so we won't have that in the future. But we were trying to do the best we could with a, with a bad situation.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When, when is the last date on the sign moratorium?
May twenty-first.
May, May when?
May twenty-first.
May twenty-first.
This is exempt from the moratorium.
Yes.
This is exempt from the moratorium.
Because this was, this application was put in before.
Oh, this is exempt?
This application preceded the moratorium and would not be bound by, governed by any changes that y'all will adopt.
Have, we had the appropriate authority to address this based on safety issues? Adequate enough that in the event that we, this, this agreement is not agreed to, then obviously they're gonna, I'm, I'm thinking they would, they would continue the lawsuit.
Now, I, I agree with Commissioner Bowman that just what I see could definitely be a safety issue. So in the event that this agreement is not approved, then would we have sufficient authority or expertise that if the lawsuit went forward to evaluate this?
Do, do we want some of that answered in public, though? I mean, I don't, I don't know, from a legal standpoint, if we want to give our, our thoughts of exposure in a public session on a potential lawsuit.
What, what, thank you, what I will say is that if the board does not approve this agreement, and a lawsuit is filed, then the case will be vigorously defended.
Okay, so we don't even have to talk about that. We, we just upper-down the agreement. Would that be sufficient?
Let me ask this, our legal counsel, because I, I completely agree with Commissioner Bowman that safety is paramount, but I'm, I'm nervous about the unintended consequences of the legal jeopardy since they caught us. I mean, that's essentially what's happened, is they've caught us with a hole in our, and they're, they're exploiting it. What's your recommendation as our county attorney?
I will say to you that none of your staff who, who were involved in this, myself, Sherry Matthews, Michael Harris, none of us are crazy about this, having to do this agreement or present this. But we, we recommend it because we've looked at, we've weighed it and balanced the pros and cons, and we're recommending this as a way to resolve the issue. And this is our agreement, and we, and in that regard, we have, the agreement was a lot looser before. We've, we've spent several months honing this thing down to its bare essentials. They want to have a much larger sign, a larger pole, and Sherry and Michael, with their assistance, they held to their guns and, you know, got them down, and we came up with the best alternative to say no that we could. So this is our, this is my recommendation.
I, I, I think my point was, when we discuss this, generally speaking, this would meet requirements for executive session. Okay, now, having said that, I think the public needs to know, and they wouldn't know if we're in executive session, that we are very concerned about their welfare, safety issues. So I'm, I'm saying, I think we can talk safety issues, and if you get to the point where you don't feel comfortable with sharing, if you think it would jeopardize if they went forward, then obviously we would go into executive session and work the details out. But I, in my mind, I knew that would be a safety issue, but if we go into executive session, then I, I don't know.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion, this man, I would recommend we go into executive session. I think I've said all that I would be comfortable saying in a public setting.
Okay.
I'd just like to make one comment. Now, I see in this report here that you gave us that it has automatic dimming technology, you know, it's supposed to get darker at night and that sort of thing, but so many times that if you ride through the Square of McDonald, and you take that turn, you've got that light just beaming on you, a lot of the times those things don't work. So I could see that not working, it'd be a huge safety factor.
I don't think they have that in McDonald. We put this in ours, we put this in ours, and in fact, the-
No, they got it in McDonald, too, but it don't work all the time.
Oh, okay, thank you. The, the agreements that this particular company or subsidiary entered into the City of Locust Grove, you know, they, they didn't have the intensity information in that agreement. So we just worked hard to make sure there was as least obstructive as possible.
I would like to, I'd like to move that the board consider to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provision of OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three and other applicable laws and pertinent to the advice of county attorney for the purpose of discussing an agreement, and, an agreement between the Southern Digital Display, Southern Digital and Henry County Board of Commissioners, to continue the discussion and limit it to that issue only. That's the motion, somebody second it. Have a second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We are now going to executive session, and you know the reason. You said it was-- Somebody move if we come out of executive session and reconvene. We have a motion from District Five, second by District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Approval of an affidavit resolution pertaining to executive session? Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion from District Five, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Correction, all opposed, raise your right hand. Since we got diverted and went from attorney comments to executive session, I'm going back up before we adjourn. And I'm going to state that Thursday, May 9, at 2:00 p.m., a meeting with the Georgia Department of Transportation regarding the LMIG funds. Tuesday, May 21, at 6:30, will be a regular meeting. Does somebody move we adjourn?
If I move.
Okay, we stand adjournment.